Call the meeting of city council with the order. Remind everybody about cell phones. Ms. Newey has been invited by Ms. Johnson to offer our invocation.
Mr. Mayor, should we do a motion to come out of closed session?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. May I have a motion to come out of closed session? Thank you.
So moved.
I move that on the matters discussed during the closed session where those lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and identified a motion by which the closed session was convened.
The motions are second. All in favor say aye.
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 And aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cheatham. Ms. Newey, did you offer invocation?
Let us pray. Most holy and all wise God, it's again that we come and we truly thank you dear God for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you in particular for bringing us through 2011 down to 2012 in the first meeting in a brand-new year. And Father God, we just ask that you would keep us and lead us in all the decisions that we make. May it be for your people, dear God, in giving you the praise, not right now, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, did you need to amend the agenda or just the closed session?
Uh, just the closed session. The agenda put a closed session.
Alright. Would you like to do that?
Yes, I'd like to, on the amendment for the closed session for after the meeting, I'd like to add that we need to review boards and commissions and possible appointments to that.
And a request-
And a request to eliminate what's about the city manager.
Eliminate that and then to include land acquisition.
Right.
Okay. Motion to amend the agenda-
Before we, do we need to amend to add to the agenda what we just talked about?
Uh, we can, I guess we could. Yes.
Under old and new business?
No, let's do it as, let's, we'll insert that at the very beginning, right after minutes.
Okay.
Would you like to make that motion? Add that to the motion?
Yes, I'd like to. Do you mean-
Yes.
Am I making it for the whole, have you already made a motion on the- I've made a motion, you can just add to it if you'd like to, about the review of closed session.
The motion would be to do-
It's gotta be his. Let's do one motion at a time. Why don't you do more than one motion?
Okay.
It helps me keep it straight. Thank you.
Okay. Motion for closed session, Barry.
Right. I just, I made that. I need a second.
Need a second.
Okay. Is there a second to the closed session amendment?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And aye. Now, for a motion to add to the agenda-
I move that we add an item right after minutes to, for, um-
Close session.
You appoint-
Not a closed session, it's just a motion.
A motion to-
Motion dealing with hiring a candidate for the city manager.
Hiring candidate for city manager. Okay. I was wondering what the word is gonna be. It's last, it's a secret.
Alright, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now, as for minutes, you have those minutes before you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, may I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
The motions are second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And aye. Motion carries. As for the-
I move that the council of the city of Franklin does appoint R. Randolph Martin as the city manager of the city of Franklin to begin employment on February 21st, 2012, pursuant to the agreement executed between the city of Franklin and Mr. Martin bearing the date of December 14th, 2011.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Nay.
Aye. Aye.
And aye. Motion carries. Thank you for the motion and thank you for the work done. Next item is citizens' time. And I do not have anyone who's signed up. Is there anybody that has signed up for citizen time?
That's okay. No one's stepping forward, so I guess there's no- That's right.
Financial matters? Melissa?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Johnson, other council members, and all others, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you.
Before you this evening, you have your financial report for the period ending November 30th, 2011. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. As you are aware, we are approaching six months into our fiscal year. So at your next council meeting, we'll be presenting the December 30th, 2011 financial report. And at that time, I will elaborate a little bit more detail in terms of where we are with finances mid-year.
Yeah, I did. I've looked at mine earlier.
On page two, the Iowa 8 revenue sharing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're showing 900 this year, 400 last year. Do we get additional, do we, I mean, that's not a change really in the number. Don't we get about 900 each year?
Um, yes, that is, that is correct. If you remember, last year, it was a little bit more than the nine, but it was a reallocation of $900,000. So this year is the $900,000 payment.
If I can interject one thing, if I'm not mistaken, this is the money that we're now on the same-
Right.
Thank you.
We agree with that.
Right.
And last year at this time, we paid Southampton County, we have not this year. Has that calculation been made?
Um, no, it has not. We're in the process of making that calculation.
Benny, I was trying to find the places and didn't follow the question. Did you ask if the Iowa 8 revenue, would we get more later? Did you ask that question?
Yes, but Southampton.
Right. We're gonna get, the 900 is what we're gonna get.
Only 900?
Mm-hmm. That's what we've been getting every year.
Well, why was it budgeted 11?
I think that's just what we anticipated. But calculation came out. Is that right?
But have we gotten the final payment? That was my question. I thought we-
We get a catch-up payment in May, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
I think they do a true-up as well.
That's right.
Well, once they have this, this is the base, and then they do a true-up. Isn't that correct?
That's right.
Yes, they do. They do a true-up. Right. I believe I had mentioned earlier that at one point, it was over $900,000. The $900,000, I will certainly check on that for your December financial report.
Yeah, look at 2010.
I believe the $900,000 may be all that we get this year. But again, we'll double-check that. But I believe that is the payment for the year, but we can check on that.
Well, look at, look at 2010, but this time, that, through November of last year, they only paid 409,000. And then they paid more over the year.
But remember, we, we were doing everything on a cash basis, now we're on accrual.
Accrual.
And I think that's where-
Now, we're tied in with exactly what Iowa 8 is. We're on the same system they're on. And before, we were all on a different system. And now, we're tying with their numbers. So we're showing more this year. We showed less at the end of last year as well, so.
Well, that's a $200,000 shortfall, so we need to be sure to be watching for that. If they don't true-up at the end of the year.
Right. With our revenue for last year being down a little bit, like in collections, the sales tax, other things, would it be a assumption, safe assumption, that maybe our amount to Southampton is not gonna come in at our budgeted number?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of your statement.
Last year, I think our collections on sales tax, meals tax, was a little less than what we had budgeted. So would that, is that an indication that the payment to Southampton County may be less than what we budgeted as well?
I am certainly hoping that that payment this year would be less. I believe last year was well over $700,000, so I'm hoping it would be less this year.
But then it depend on what really sales tax is coming out of that quarter?
Yes, it does.
I mean, so.
Could be up and down in other places.
It could be up, like, that's true.
That is true.
I'm not sure anything is indicated yet.
Well, in this particular one, it shows that we paid nothing to Southampton at this point.
Right.
Even though last year, we paid 427,000.
Yes.
Is there a reason that that hasn't been done?
We're working on the calculation.
Oh.
Normally, it was paid in October, we're working on it.
And to be honest with you, I think last year, we were quite early in paying this, earlier than we were the other two years that I've been on council.
Yeah, no.
We were never quite as early as we were then.
Right.
So.
I didn't know whether that was an incremental payment, you did it quarterly, or-
I know last year was paid in October, and I do not know whether or not that was the norm, as Councilman Cheatham had just stated, but that is why it's not showing in your November, because we haven't paid it.
We did make that payment early last year, and we have this year, two new people, both in here and in the county. And our finance director is trying to recalculate and understand that and make sure we're making an accurate payment. She and I discussed it today, so we, we aren't behind. It's just that we have two new people looking at it, we'll make sure that we make the correct payment. And there may be some adjustments, as Melissa has implied, so we're not-
Is there an anticipated due date to the county?
Not, not really. They just have to get it within this fiscal year.
I think once all parties agree-
They would like to have it, of course.
Certainly possible, yeah. But would we?
But, uh, as long as it's in contact with them, they know that she's working on it. And I know that she's-
Yeah, I don't think the calculations is easy as these are-
It's not easy.
...to be collected, multiply it by this percentage, and hand it over. There's lots of expenditures and other things that go into that that need to be calculated.
Well, there's one issue she's really looking at. We have to make sure that we are including in that, correct me when I'm wrong with-
Okay.
Uh, all of the expenses that need to be included. And so she's been carefully reviewing that. Once you do it, you've done it.
Yes.
Hard to come back and correct.
Okay. Any other questions on the report?
I had a couple when we got over to the funds. Let's see if I can remember. Um, sale of water seems to be way down?
People driving dirty cars.
That's what I'm saying.
Is any, anything-
Sale of water?
Sale of water and water and sewer fund.
Water.
But Benny, it's not down too much based on last year, though, if you look.
Yeah.
Well, we're down $40,000, but we're also budgeted extra hundred, so we were anticipating that we would have more, so.
Mm-hmm. Percentage-wise, it's down one.
And that, I don't know if that's some, somehow affected by seasonal, where April, May, June, you use more water, people are coming, getting swimming pools filled up and washing cars and stuff like that, or, or anything like that. I don't know what affects that, but that one just... And our sewer system repairs, or sewer system operating costs are almost over double what they were last year?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, did we do some major repairs?
We did.
Yes, we did.
And they were-
They were budgeted.
They were budgeted, which shows up in the budget.
Right.
I mean, we showed almost a $500,000 increase in the budget.
That is correct, sir.
Has that been completed, or we still have more to go?
We have more to go.
I'm not sure. Hopefully, if someone here-
Uh, Mrs. Chase is here, he did ask it today.
Complete.
The full million dollars worth of expenditures?
It was $500,000. We just had, but-
Alright, it's showing sewer system expenses. That must not necessarily be just repairs, but the whole, I guess, the whole operation at a million. Okay.
Trying to get fancy with it, too. I'm just trying to find the page. What page is it on next?
Budget amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
You do have a couple of budget amendments for your consideration this evening. Um, the first one is Budget Amendment 2012-13. As you are aware, the city receives donations annually from the Camp Family Foundation. What you have before you is a request to amend the budget by $52,000 to reflect the donations received in December 2011. The police department was allocated $20,500. The fire department discretionary fund, $10,500. Donation for thermal imaging cameras, $10,000. And donations for the Hunterdale Volunteer Fire Department, $11,000, for a total of $52,000. Supporting documentation is attached.
Um, thermal imaging cameras, who's that for?
The fire department.
We're gonna need a motion to approve those transfers. May I have such a motion to approve that amendment?
Do we have it? Is it just one?
Is it just, is it just the one?
There's another one.
There's another one, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I see another budget. Sorry, a total of three.
Alrighty. 2012-
And the second one is 12-14?
Yes, 2012-14.
Okay.
I mean, this is a request to amend the fiscal year 12 budget to reflect additional grant, carryover, and donations received in the current fiscal year. Um, the Parks and Recreation received $493 in donations, and also, there was a carryover grant that we needed to get in this year's budget in the amount of $27,046 for the police department.
What's the RISIN grant? Is RISIN's been for? RCISN? What was your question? What is RISIN, RCISN grant? Chief, can you address what that grant is?
Um, Mayor, now we're moving right now to the topic.
RCISN? Okay.
It's a grant.
And we had $26,000 that we did, I mean, um-
Twenty-
Twenty-six thousand we didn't use.
That's fine.
Or 27,046, that we didn't use last year, and we re-appropriating it.
That is absolutely correct, yes.
And that expenditure is for what? Will be used for what?
Um, again, I, and I do not know the acronym for that, but we can certainly find out, and I can report back to you. But that grant has been in the budget. I know I've looked at it for the last past couple of years, so it's a grant that has been consistently approved, at least for the last past three to four years. I've looked at it to try to verify the actual carryover. Um, as far as the purpose of it, if the police chief can't answer, then we can certainly get an answer to you.
Well, I wish you hadn't said you looked at it for the past three, four years.
Right.
I assume in county, or whatever. So you've seen it before.
Mm-hmm.
And three, four years, and you still don't know what it is?
No, in terms of just seeing it in the budget for the last past, just the term RISIN grant. I've seen it, the term in the last couple of years' budget.
Okay. I wish somebody knew what it was.
Well, we'll get an answer.
We will certainly get an answer at the next meeting.
Okay. And really, it's just a carryover from previous year of unused funds?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I guess, just, Chief, Mr. Mayor, where, I guess where I'm going is, if monies are being carried over, and I'm still learning, it would seem to me that those monies would be taken into consideration when we're doing new budgets. If they didn't use that 27 last year, would they carry over to help support the budget, the next budget? Well, generally speaking, grants are grant-specific and function-specific. So they're restricted funds in most cases, so. Okay. Let's defer and get a qualified answer at the next meeting, would be-
Excellent. And back in August, council, excuse me, mayor council, the interim finance director did do an appropriation amendment for grant carryovers. This one just happened to be one that was submitted.
Okay.
But again, we make sure that we get those answers to you at your, at your next meeting.
Okay. Good.
Alrighty.
I think that is the last of the two amendments.
We do have one more.
There's another one, isn't there?
Ah, okay.
Yes.
Isn't there one more?
There is one more, yes.
I'm looking.
Budget Amendment 2012-15 is a request that you all are certainly aware of. Back in December, council did authorize a December 2011 pay adjustment. This amendment simply amends the various line items of the budget to cover that pay The amount of the request is for $14,954 to cover the 2011 pay adjustment, and the funding source comes from various, excuse me, the funding source comes from salary line items in the Public Works Department. These positions were included in the budget, but they were not filled as of July 1st, 2011. To date, these positions have been filled, but it created some funds that were available because the positions were not again filled in beginning of the fiscal year.
I think it's very appreciative that all the, all the departments chipped in with monies that they could find to, to make this, make this bonus work. Very much appreciated.
Question, Mr. Mayor. Did all departments, is this all on the Christmas bonuses and all that?
Yes, sir.
But looking at this, all of the public works?
Right. That is correct, just public works.
That is correct.
Right.
And it was only for that one item related to that event.
Okay.
That's the last one, man.
And that's, okay. And that would be 2012-15, so we have 13, 14, and 15?
13, 14.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council of the city of Franklin adopt proposed Budget Amendment 2012-13 to appropriate donations from the Camp Family Foundation to the police department in the amount of $20,500, and to the fire and rescue department in the aggregate amount of $31,500, and adopt proposed amendments 2012-14 to appropriate grant donation funds not expended in FY 2011 to the FY 2012 operating budget for Parks and Rec in the amount of $493, and for the police department, amount of $27,046, and to appropriate donation funds to Parks and Recreation in the FY 2012 operating budget amount of $585, and adopt proposed Budget Amendment 2012-15, transfer referring expenditures from Public Works in the amount of $14,954 to various line items in the general water and sewer, electric, airport, and social services department to cover the December 2011 bonus pay adjustment for eligible employees.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 And aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. Question, I might be a little late on this, and I vote stands, but, um, so, the foundation gives funds to cities. Correct. And they get to determine how those funds are expended. Not normal.
No.
'Cause, I mean, I'm just seeing a, a, a major difference. The Parks and Recreation got basically close to $500,000. Other places got thousands of dollars when, when our kids really need help. So is there, you know, any, any reason why that was break down like that? Generally-
Let me, let me answer that partially, and Mayor fill in when I finish. There's a annual, there's a time of the year, each year, where we are notified that the Camp Foundation will receive requests from the city for funding of certain items. Those requests come through the city departments into my office. I review them. Some go forward and some don't. This year, we did send in a request for Parks and Recs. The foundation did not fund it. So the requests come in, they get reviewed, they get approved by the city manager's office, and they're then forwarded to the, to the foundation, who makes the decision as to which items they will fund. They have the right to not fund, to fund, or to add items that we did not ask for. They did all of that this year. They funded some that we asked for, they gave us funds that we did not ask for, and they did not fund everything that we asked for. But there was a request that did go in that would have funded some items in Parks and Recs, and they did not fund it.
So also-
And Mayor, you have more history with this than, than I do. I only know that that's, the process has been in place since I have been in, in office. I do review them. I don't send in everything that departments ask for. And I do know that we get the item that you just approved, which is discretionary money, which is something that I am philosophically opposed to. The foundation knows it, but I don't turn the money back to the foundation. But I do not let the departments use it at will. They know, and the foundation knows, that they have to give me a plan that I must approve before those funds can be dispensed to them. I don't know if I answered every question you had or not.
Relatively, but I just, it's, it's just kinda hard for me to fathom that such a charitable organization would be so limited when it came, comes to our children and youth, but so liberal when it comes to law enforcement. If we don't do something with these young people, then we certainly will need to continue to funding more law enforcement. So I was just concerned, but I understand, and my colleague brought to me my attention, to my attention, it's their discretion. They give it the way they want to, so.
It is, it is.
And want to give it to the kids. And sometimes, to their credit, they will observe things that are needed and will make an offer. I remember when one of the dogs died, there was substantial interest in helping the city without our request to replace two dogs. And they volunteered to say, "We understand you need the dogs, and we'd like to give you the money to do that."
That, that particular item was the canine was a particular item that Mr. Camp had an interest in, wanted to fund, and made his request through the foundation to fund it, was not the request we initiated. I think that's-
Honestly, I mean, something-
They do a lot for the city, and just because they're not maybe giving some to Parks and Recs that you feel like they should, there's no need for you to make that statement on their not being benevolent to the kids, because Parks and Recs is for everybody, not just for the children. It's for everybody of all ages and, and all walks of life, so.
Well, I didn't realize that I was making a statement of in-benevolence. I said that they seem like a very, from my observation, a very charitable organization. I would just find that I would think that we would be, be willing to either give us some leeway or direct the funds to the source of the problem instead of the reaction to the problem. Well, you have to make your case for it, and they have to agree or disagree as
Well, you have to make your case for it, and they have to agree or disagree as to how they wanna allocate the money.
The other piece of it is that they, uh, most of the time, not all the time, but a lot of times, they will not fund salaries and programs that are an ongoing nation, nature. They want a one-time donation to handle a particular item. They don't wanna be obligated for years and years of trying to fund, uh, a position or a parti- they'll do a particular program for a short period of time. So you, you kinda have to work in those parameters when you're making your grant.
I understand, and the only reason, the only reason it came to my attention was because of the diversity in the sums. Everything was thousands of dollars, and when it came to Parks and Recs, it was less than five hundred dollars. That isn't enough to fund a salary, and I appreciate it if it was only five dollars. I appreciate it because they didn't have to donate it to us, and I am grateful. However, I do take, uh, my main concern, just being here, of the citizens and the, the children and, and jobs for our people that live here. So, um, that's the only reason I noticed it, 'cause it was such a diversity in the amount.
Well, Mr. Michael, I, my memory doesn't allow me to recall all are exactly what we asked them to fund for recreation. Only one item somehow stands out in my mind among others that we asked for. We did ask for some funding to support scholarships for youth. That wasn't the whole package, but it was one item, and it just did not, they did not choose to fund it. And there is no written historical information in the files for me to look at to say why, because they don't give us their reasons for funding what they do. What they do or do not fund.
And we all understand that their revenues are down because of parks, and therefore they've had to reduce... Even eliminate some funding and reduce others. So, we're very grateful that we got what we got. Okay, any other questions on the amendments or anything? Uh, I think we've already passed it, and this was just conversation...
Yeah, this was just conversation, yeah.
Okay. The last item on our scheduled agenda is, uh, old and new business, uh, regional meeting. Um, during the month of December, uh, new members of the boards of both Isle of Wight and Southampton have been, have been elected. Uh, I've been able to, I ran across a few from both jurisdictions, and just threw out the idea, would it be nice for us to get together collectively as three boards? And just get to meet each other and get to know each other, and to have an opportunity to start building relationships with the new players, both from Isle of Wight and from Southampton. Uh, the ones that I've talked to, which was just in a social setting or, you know, running across them, um, I've talked to a couple from Southampton and a couple from Isle of Wight, and they both agreed that they thought it would be a great idea. So I told them I would bring it back to you all and ask, uh, to go forward with organizing, uh, just a meeting, a, a, more of an informal meeting, um, have it at Workforce Development Center, and have all three boards come, so we could get to know who everybody is. We could kinda talk about some of the things we have in common, and see if there's some things we wanna build an agenda around going forward collectively. Um, uh, with, with the encouragement of the other board, uh, board members, not the boards. Um, I was privileged to hear at the Governor's Conference on Education and Workforce Development, the, uh, HR director for what is now Huntington Ingalls, which was Newport New Ship, that he made an amazing presentation on workforce development and education, those kinds of things, uh, at the Governor's Conference in the month of December. Um, I was able to get in touch with him to find, I talked to him then, I said, "Gee, it'd be nice if we could get you to come over and talk to us sometime," and he's agreed to come, and both boards have said they would prefer both people, excuse me, 'cause they hadn't gone to boards. Uh, Isle of Wight did put it on their organizational agenda, and did say they'd be glad, glad to be. Uh, suggested that we might wait and do it in March, when everybody could kinda get settled into their position. So if you all will agree, um, I'll have Ms. Fleming help coordinate finding a date sometime in March, uh, that where we could have everybody come over to Workforce and, you know, have a thirty-minute meet and greet kinda thing, and then, uh, uh, Mr. Emmett, Emmett, Emmeringer, E-R-M-A-T-I-N-G-E-R is his name, it's hard to pronounce, uh, has said that he would be delighted to come over. Uh, they were gonna give me some dates of when he would be available. Uh, and I can report back to you what dates are available. I just told him Monday nights were not good.
Yeah, an evening, but it would be an evening meeting.
It would be an evening meeting, and, uh, he would prefer six o'clock, 'cause he lives in Towana. Um, so, and there's no charge for that. He would come, uh, as, as a way to help the region, so... Would that be something that we'd be agreeable to, to initiate?
Sure.
I'm all for it. I encourage it. I think we need to work with the, uh, neighboring counties. I'm just concerned, will, will we be putting more emphasis on, um, the presentation, being his time is limited, things of that nature, rather than on this cooperative meeting, this meet and greet? To me, that's a little more important. I think it's urgent that we should get with our counties. But I would just like to see, um, if we have to adjust with the, um, man from Workforce Development Center, that would be more acceptable to me than adjustment with the two counties. You know, if we can get them to agree to a time that we can all three meet, then that, to me, is a priority. I would certainly like to do that.
Okay. We'll just put it together and see what we can come up with, and come back to you if I have a recommended date.
I wanna make sure I understand what I'm supposed to do.
I'll get with you, and, uh, but basically...
Pick a date? Am I also charged with an agenda, developing an agenda, or just getting the date?
Um, just coordinate the dates.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put together an agenda, and I'll bring it back to you. It'll be a simple, informal agenda.
Yeah, I think March would be good. That'd give them a chance to get their legs underneath of them good.
And my thought was that we would just have a social get-together, so we just meet each other, and then, you know, we can have him speak, and then him leave, and us continue our meeting.
That works.
And then he can be out in thirty minutes after whenever, and he can get home. And then we could continue with a, more of a functional agenda to say, you know, what, what's going on in people's minds? I know that they're both boards, well, both, members of both boards are talking very positively about wanting to be more cooperative in services and those kinds of things. And so, it might open the door to, you know, some, some opportunities.
Is there a, is, is there any legal way that this could be an informal meeting? Because, and the reason I say that, if, that would keep us off of an agenda, which we would have to follow, so that we really can just spend a night or a couple hours just talking with our colleagues in the county? 'Cause if we go with a specific agenda, then there is certainly to be items that some people are for, some people are against.
Oh, it wouldn't be anything we'd vote on, it would be...
Of course we would vote on it.
My suggestion would be kind of a roundtable discussion, just to, you know, just, I mean, we could even stand up and talk.
Very similar to what we did out at, um, uh, earlier on with Southampton and, uh, the meeting where we had...
Out of Joe's?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I won't be here.
Okay. Well, we'll, I'll pursue that, and I'll report back, and that was, that was the only thing that I had. Um, I thought of something today that has gone on, that I don't know whether I've mentioned this to you before, and I think I have, but just it called, I got an email about putting together another meeting. Uh, the health community is trying to work with, uh, Peninsula Pitch, is what they call it, but it's a, it's the group like the Iowa Medical Center that's operated out of the peninsula to work on trying to serve the undermet needs of the medical, of the medically needed community, unmet needs here in Franklin. And there's gonna be another meeting. They pulled together representatives from the various agencies and the hospital and all that kinda stuff, and they're setting up another meeting coming up probably in the next thirty days, I guess. Um, I attend those meetings. It's not a city function. It's not a commitment by the city to do anything other than to say, "We would love to see our citizens served," and, you know, it's something that's been promoted by the Virginia Primary Care Association out of Richmond, who determined that Franklin and south, southern Southampton are technically underserved areas medically. And they would attempt to set up a clinic that would be a fee for service on a sliding scale basis, and the hospital is involved in their discussion, social services, mental health, I'm sorry, Western Tidewater, uh, health is involved, all those health people are involved, and they just are, you know, just in the beginning stages of that. There's nothing to report, other than they've had a meeting, there is interest, through the community, uh, and I'll try to keep informed on that, so... That's it.
Mr. Mayor, uh, there was something I mentioned, um, it's a little different, but, um, in the vein of, I feel as though it's our responsibility to our constituents that if anything is going on, even if we can't affect it on a state and a national level, we should bring it to their attention. And, uh, I would like the citizens to be aware, and they might wanna look it up on the internet, the Senate Bill five-ten, which is about to pass. We have a strong agriculture industry in this area, and the Senate is about to pass a Bill five-ten, Senate Bill five-ten, that would, um, put Big Brother into whether you can grow any vegetables in your home or, uh, limit, uh, vegetables that are sold at farmers' markets. So if you are interested, um, before it's too late, they are, there are sites that urge that you contact your senators and ask them to not support this bill, because it would be taking away freedoms from farmers and, um, personal people from growing fruits and vegetables at home. It's Senate Bill five-ten, and, uh, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council and, uh, the citizens of Franklin. That's underway.
Okay, very good. Any other old or new business? If not, may I have a motion to go back into closed session?
Hope I get this right. I move that the Franklin City Council meet in closed session for discussion and consideration of boards and commissions and potential land.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I gotta give you a code, Virginia Code two-two, two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A-one. Now I've got it, does it? Is that correct?
Yes, and, and also should be, um, three-seven-one-one...
You wanna look it up?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to look it up.
I'll look it up for you.
I think it's A-seven.
Eight-seven?
I think it's A-seven.
Okay, and two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A-seven.
I have a motion, is there a second? May I have a second? Trying to figure this computer out. I have a motion, is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And aye, motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
Go Tigers! Hey, how about them Hoagies? How about those Hoagies?